That would certainly come in handy with it.
She is, you know, right. You're fine with that?
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, so what else will we be proposing here after what the Rachel Sessions did? Is there something else we could...
After I remove the 200,000 act and Commissioner Vaughn discuss adding cost per unit and road bridge vehicles back in?
With the savings of that, so...
The savings of that, yes. And that leaves us 120 savings. With a 3.75% tax increase, it would be 13,000, 14,000 short of the balanced budget.
And that's still with the 2% in there?
And that's still with the 2%.
So we need 13,000, we need $14,000 to get a break even right now. Is it too late for a garage sale or a car wash?
It's gonna make a car wash.
Surely we can come up with $14,000 somewhere.
Karen, what with the...
I'll take an annual 100,000 change of beginning, we're not gonna have a change of beginning next year.
You know that we're back...
And if we do, we got 300,000 saved in the capital mortgage slash citywide commitment.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
Make that change.
Actually, it's changed through, that's it.
That's fine. I can handle that. Do we need to discuss, uh, Scott, about the joint C cases? Is that gonna affect the budget any?
Well, that remains to be seen. I don't, I don't... It shouldn't affect staffing, which is a important question. We'll handle it, we've got, I think we'll have a better idea about how it's really going to work next year with the budget.
Okay, so it's not gonna change the bottom line on the account?
Right now, I don't see any changes in the bottom line. They, well, they've taken on some jobs that they thought ahead, but yeah.
Okay. Uh, Karen, I did discuss with you this morning the fact that the tax God was wrong in saying that the veterans highway signs are free. They will take, they'll take care of that cost. They will not take care of that cost of $5,200 per sign. And Jack Barnes wants us to pay for at least two of them. And, uh, we have our own sign department. I mean, we can make our own sign. I don't know if they can... I don't know. I just really hate to put money in the budget for that.
Speaking of that issue, the paper had it wrong again. Wade already voted on it at our last meeting to support that, and we're still asking for our support in the Senate's papers.
Fine.
Just so you know. We got the source.
Karen?
Never had a Florida that was wanting to know.
Can I, uh, can we see the percentage with the 1% cola? Because we're at, we're at currently a 3.75 or even increase.
You put $100,000 back in the world or way out, we're good.
Well, she only put the 15,000 break even, not 100.
She's not gonna put 100.
Okay.
Pardon?
Can we put the 100,000 in then?
That's next year's.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Thank you. So with a 1%...
Well, we'll go with about 3.10. 3.10. Somewhere between 3 and 4, probably about 3.10.
And that's based on the effective tax rate. That's not on the rate that we're currently paying.
Correct. That's how we have to calculate these over...
You know, that's how we have to calculate. But, you're realistic, man. A homeowner looks at it as, what's the increase above what we're currently paying? Unless we make a big deal out of it and say, no, we're, we're looking at effective tax rate. Which I know that that's what the state does to us, but they don't ever live by that themselves.
Right, and it would be $17 for the average home.
What's the evaluation for the average home?
About, about 100. So it'd be 2.19 is the actual increase.
That's $17 a year.
A year.
And that's with a 1% cola. That's only 1% cola.
What is it with 2%? I'm sorry. It's always got numbers for you, I know. It's easy for you. I'm very efficient here. One, you know, 1% is...
Don't take me, say me, you're gonna say me.
No, I know. Next one off.
I just question. With the 2% cola, the break even?
The break even.
Yeah, 1%.
Yes.
And it's 460233? Is that the rate?
To do, uh... 6.76, that would be the rate we...
With the debt.
And that's the 3.75% increase.
And what's the cost of the citizen for that?
$21.47 cents a year.
Actually, not 5%. Is there anything, anything else I can think of where we can, that we have forgotten to add in or that we can take out and give to someone time? So that's what we're putting back, the two vehicles back in?
That's what the, these are your...
Okay, good.
Yes.
We had, we had not, we checked the motion. It was December 2014. Uh, and it was not, you are correct, it was not included in the motion. I think we discussed it, but it was not included in the motion.
Okay, and I did not, I didn't want to see your, I went back and looked and did find it, so, uh...
Is that included?
Yeah, it is not included anywhere, but it will be in the capital projects fund. Um, we'll be able to transfer more money to there, that more of that, the revenue, the spend of the lot, but it will be coming back now, so...
When do we have to pay that, to the city?
I think it's when the, when the break ground...
So I think it's 50% when the project is halfway done, uh, and then 50% when it's completed. If it's a great ground.
I think, I think they have...
50% originally, um, 25% at the end of the year.
And obviously, all of that will be contingent on, um, all the continued discussions of what's happening, LGC, and then the vote that the taxpayers will have or the voters will have.
They're voting on all of it or just the input?
According to my knowledge, they're voting on just the baseball venue.
Baseball venue? Entertainment.
The, um, how, how does this make our reserved look as far as our 90-day policy?
We should have at least 30 days. We would still be about an A1,000 of our minimum requirement in fund balance unless we transfer additional funds to cover the parking garage.
So it's satisfactory, is it? Okay. We're okay?
We are okay. Yes, we need to keep a minimum of 9 days to ensure...
Which equals how much?
About $15,730 on the budget. 17 million, 17, 13, 13, 13, 13. It's part of, we need to start up.
Isn't that 16, you know?
13,730,000, that's 12,200.
Okay, and we have 500,000 above that, right?
Right, and that is taking some estimates. You'll see that the, uh, the budget itself is going to say 10 million, but historically, we understand a budget of about 5.5%. So I have taken that into consideration into some calculations down here.
Okay.
Because we know that, that we a lot spend our own time on budgets, so, uh, once I think those adjustments that I think are named one that you see there is an additional that we will lack, we have over our minimum requirement.
So we'll pay our good markets, not the...
No, it's good every now and then, if you don't have to.
Well, I'm, I think they're already that way.
I know, I know.
I think that they are, they're dealing with certain costs and remaining for the most part. And I just want to say too that I really appreciate your cooperation, Ms. Vaughn. Um, and I know a lot of you ask for, for salary increases for, you know, for certain people or for your entire department. And I beg you to bear with us until we get this figured out. We'll get it figured out at some point along the way. And, um, I will reiterate, if you don't raise taxes every year, you're gonna fall behind. So I'm just saying, a little bit every year will keep us equal, and if we, if we had done that along the way, we wouldn't be in this pickle we're in right now. So just keep that in mind, okay?
I think, um, just going, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the special budget where we are right now? Or I think there was a line that you wanted to, so...
I don't think so.
Had to do with...
It was Scott.
True.
Oh.
Um, and Judge, to your question, it was, it's 50% when a project starts on the parking garage, 25% when the project is halfway done, and then 25% when it's done.
Okay, what do we do now?
We need to put some funds, funds in the capital project to cover that. So I guess we need to probably go ahead and do the million, eight, nine thousand. I, I guess that will probably all happen next year, next fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm assuming it would happen in the 15th, 16th, maybe.
How do you think, how do you see it in a little year?
Um, the, the turnkey on the project, um, once it gets started, is less than a year. So I, I would think so, if, if it does keep happening, but... Um, Sebastian, on the, we also had some money in there for the utilities on the duty project, 30,000. I can't remember, Karen, if we put that in...
Put it in.
Contingencies, and you, I just remembered you had an update on us for...
Well, I talked to Tex dot and, uh, I talked to, I haven't talked to the contact people yet, but there's only Atmos and AT&amp;T that has to be moved. And I, I'm under the impression they're gonna move them for us, and then they'll replace them when they're done, but they haven't given me a cost. I don't think it's gonna cost that much, if any.
So, uh, my question is on the contingency, the 30,000 we have for that. I think we still need to have something, just so for the...
Yeah, the situation case, yeah.
Um, do you think 15,000 would cover that versus the 30,000, or what is your...
I don't even, I don't even know where to, to guess.
So you just wanna leave that and not touch it until we, okay.
I'd rather leave it there. I feel more comfortable that way.
Okay. Yeah, and it's in the contingency, so it'll, we can use it throughout the year and time, so, okay. Thank you.
Just one more minute, Karen. Okay, so what, where do we, where do we go now?
I need to add, here is, uh... Get over to special, let's see what that is, you want? So that leaves us $11,000 in capital projects. So if we don't transfer all money over there, that will be net part of, or part of the 4 million that sets up for the, I guess, some additional works projects. So if we want to transfer more money into the capital projects to cover the parking garage, what? Should do from that project.
Where would you transfer the money from, the general?
Probably just how dry out my balance. And we've got 200,000 scheduled to transfer currently.
This would be on top of that.
So if you have things in there, good, because what you're marking with the district board and so, capital projects.
And how much has been here marked for the... I know, I know we went over it the first day. I'm just trying to remember the dollar amount for the SO projects and the district board.
There's a million in the regular capital projects fund, and there's another million in a separate fund, uh, a fund specifically for the sheriff's project.
So is that 3 million total, Karen, or 2, 2 million, okay? A million for the sheriff admin and a million for the district board. So if we transfer from general, taxes will have to be increased to offset that.
You have, or if you go over the 581,000, you're gonna potentially dip below your 90. Depending on how much we spend this year, I guess.
So we can't take that money from the other account, we just have to add it in?
Right, those are the only two accounts that is, uh, I'm not restricted in some light.
And the 90-day reserve we use for, um, our evaluation when we go up for bonds and how strong we are as a county and...
That plus, especially this year, we will be bringing in new tax dollars early into later in the year, probably October. And you can open, you'll receive very little. And keep in mind, this year we did have the stat do with one of our investments, and cash will be a little bit tighter. So we need to have that reserve to get us through those old tax dollars.
Because the cash is gonna come in a little later, timing-wise, into the year. So we've gotta have this to be able to pull from and pay the bills.
Correct. So we need to raise taxes at 1% or so.
If you want to maintain the fund balance for the future building projects, you may have to do that.
1% or 1/2%?
1/2% would give us to the, a little over $100,000.
So the 2% percentage points? Well, a percentage and a half.
Well, keep in mind, you have the 581, I already said.
Maybe another percentage point. And the other projects in capital projects, are they, is that where the Tyler project is sitting in, and that's where the fire station project is sitting in?
Correct.
So there's 1.2 million out there for Tyler, and then the 2 million for the fire station.
Those are the normal projects out there.
And then the million for sheriff and the million for district board, sheriff and the district board. And that one was, I, I, to your point, Karen, we didn't explicitly say that in the motion. I know that we, we talked about it during our discussion, that that's where it would be slated, but it was not in the motion. And so if, the feeling on paper now is that the other projects have now kind of taken over that slot, and that one got pushed out. Um, even though that was vetted out almost a year ago, well, December of 14. Um, so when I see that, that's what I'm struggling with a little, because it feels like that one got pushed out a little.
Okay, so we need to bring that, that line up. And what we can do is to add into the, to the budget. So we need to raise 1/2%? Is that gonna be enough to do it, or...
Yeah, 4%.
4%?
Perhaps, uh, 4%. 4% will be due, actually, will be 1% council, add to the 581, it's already...
So that makes it 4.75 million percentage.
And Judge, if I, if I may say something here in view of the court, if you'll bear with me, because I, I don't mean this in any kind of tone. But, when, when I struggled with our JP package that we bought for $750,000, knowing that the court project was coming down the pipeline, I struggled with that dollar amount. This is what I was envisioning. And so sometimes I know I come off extremely kind of passionate and probably need to tone it down a bit, and so I'll pray on that and work on it. But when I see that dollar amount and I see this immediate need coming down the road, $750,000 could avoid a potential additional increase. So I just, I just say that as just a quick education moment, and then I'll be quiet. But, but I feel like sometimes that's why I get worked up, because I'm seeing this down the road.
Excellent. That's pretty layable, the stuff that we had.
Correct, correct. Yeah, no, and I'll...
I agree, yeah, I'm standing up because I'm excited also, but it is what it is.
Yes, no, I agree.
What can we do with the million dollars for the courts?
I'm sorry?
You have a million dollars in there for the courts, district courts, but what can you do with that? What's it for?
Basically, if we have any architectural services or any demolition or easels or anything that need to be done before we actually get into the construction, where we would have to borrow the bulk of the money, it's just a lot of the preliminary work.
So that is, uh, something that might be a little bit, would be necessary to have that, that value there.
Karen, we do the 4.75 increase, what's that, and the raised taxes for, um, how, for household?
That, that's the 3 cents, I think it is, $27.26.
And I need 1,000.
That's, got it. Sorry, no.
Sure, I'm sorry. So what do we do, get it to us?
I say that.
4.75.
Can I say it 1%, 1%? Karen, he was getting ready to ask a question on that statement, I saw the change in. 3.25, 1%.
Uh, plus we would need to have the, so probably...
4.1, 4.2?
4.75 was the other one. 4.1, yeah.
And that's with the 1%?
Move that on over to see what it costs. Here.
The order of hours, order of hours here, prints, a year. You gotta go to...
Yeah, I'm gonna, to move, move it along, I'm, I'm already, I would do four, I mean, uh, four months.
4.75, 2%. Can I get a low sign?
Back, I will. Remember was that, uh, we, still record at 2%.
Are you setting the rate with that concern?
Yeah, I'm setting, uh, motion, the, uh, pro, post budget, and we're ready to change, we're ready to, uh, calculate the tax rate and emphasize that, so it's... You get that doing?
Motion to set, to set proposed budget with current changes as of today.
We had 2% to...
Go ahead and add 2% in there.
Including 2% across the board?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, cost of the increase.
Yeah, because we're not actually, we're voting on the budget yet. We've got to, we're just kinda setting parameters for that, which is advertised slightly. Okay, I'll talk about that in a second.
Okay, so I have a motion, Commissioner Vaughn, you have a second. My second. I have a motion second, all in favor of Rachel, again? Oppose? 32. Okay, what's the, what's the next step there?
Okay, next steps is, we got, you know, we've had a proposed budget schedule that we want to follow. It's running a little bit dangerous, so, but bottom line is to give us time to... We now have to advertise, uh, in, basic information about this budget and, uh, set a date for public hearing, which I, which we were thinking about doing next week, but I think to make our deadlines, we need to set for the next commission court. So the public's in the line, so we could set a public hearing for the 24th, then I think that would just move us back a few days here and there. And that means we would have a, we're gonna be required to have a, uh, two public hearings on the tax rate. And I would suggest we have one on the 3rd, uh, September, and the second one on the 10th. And I, I think we originally scheduled, thought about having that on, but the first hearing, which was originally gonna be on August 27th, uh, yeah, evening, about 30:00 time, and I assume you still want to do that.
On the 27th?
Yes.
Of August?
Well, actually, we moved that back a week, so now our public hearings on the tax rate would be on September the 3rd and 10th. And then you would make a final, have a final vote on the tax rate on September 14th.
I had the 3rd as the original date on my calendar, date for the public meeting at 5:30. I don't know if that...
What date is that?
September 3rd, Thursday?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay. So we have the...
Really good, Karen.
And then the second one on the 8th at 9 o'clock?
It's gonna work. I don't know, I can't think that'll work.
So I'm not going to watch that effect, that'll work. So stretch out the ten. Yeah. Third. And the third will be at five, be at five thirty?
Five thirty.
It's at nine?
Mm-hmm, it's during the regular, oh, yes, at nine, it's, yeah, it's not a regular.
But it is a regular commission court.
Oh, isn't it after the holiday?
Of the holidays, it's seven, so.
Is that right?
No, no, that's.
Of the tax hearings, you can have these special meetings.
Okay.
Third day of January.
When's the fourth day? So we're doing that. The third and the eighth, that's what's on the count.
So we're still going to be in line and they, to get everything done in time?
I would need to schedule a day.
We'll be okay. Do we need a motion there? Set those dates? Okay, we did that next time or?
I would just go ahead and just say that, set that to July.
Okay, so the number of motion of those two dates?
Move, move it, we said the public hearings for tax base voting at September third at five thirty a.m. And September eighth at nine a.m.
Twenty-second?
Sure.
Okay, a motion second all in favor of Rachel O'Gorman.
Lots of it.
Thank you. So is that all we, all the damage we can do today?
It's a lot of damage.
Okay, there's nothing further? For Mr. and Mrs. Turner, thank you very much.